Good evening, welcome to the November 28th, 2023 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. If the city clerk could please take the roll.
Ford.
Please take attendance.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Buelow.
Here.
Mugawar.
Here.
Hayes.
Present.
Erickson.
Here.
Six present, one excused absent.
Leading us in the invocation tonight will be Councilmember Ford.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
This evening, we have Nora Nimmer with us from Alps Charter School to help lead us in the pledge. Nora, if you could come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as I mentioned, we have Nora Nimmer of Alps Charter School here with us this evening. Thank you for being here and helping lead us in the pledge. If you wouldn't mind, I know I just gave your name, but maybe give us your grade and what's your favorite subject at school right now?
I am in sixth grade and my favorite subject right now, I would have to say literacy.
Who's the teacher of that class?
Mrs. Horn.
All right. Well, Dad, thank you for bringing her this evening. Thank you for being here. Got a certificate for you. All right. If you'd like. All right, first up this evening, we have a couple of public hearings on the docket, but I need to do some clarification real quick. We had a number of people that just registered to speak this evening, and I'm pretty sure it's on, a few of them are on the public hearing, the first one. Steve Klinger, is that for the Clearville?
Yes.
Okay. Same thing for maybe Richard Fisher? Nope. Which one are you looking to speak to? Thirty-nine, thank you. And then Carol, Jeff, and Steve Faust, all for Clearville Road, I assume? Perfect, thank you. Okay, so first up, public hearing, Resolution 23-583. This is approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 23-16, concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, and storm sewer main and laterals, new and relay, for Clearville Road, State Road 91 to West 20th Avenue. If anyone is here, it looks like first up is Steve Faust. We can take you now, and then that'll be followed by Steve Klinger. If you'd like to come up to the microphone over here. Welcome. And just a reminder for those here, limit on comments is five minutes, and then pertaining to the subject at hand, which is the public hearing for special assessments on Clearville Road.
I want to speak on a subject on this special assessments that you've done on Clearville Road from 91 to 20th Street, and pretty much what I say is probably going to be echoed to you guys by the other speakers at the same time. I feel, we feel, that this assessment is totally insane. I've talked to two councilmen, I've sent emails to everyone, two actually called me back, and I did discuss the issue with them. The amount of assessments that you're giving us for water and sanitary sewer, which are two things that we already paid for, we have a state-approved water, we have state-approved sanitary, you guys took us into the city without our vote, and now you're requesting something in the neighborhood of $40,000 a person, one person over $100,000. I know no one up here really thinks that's money, but that's life-changing to everyone that, all five residents along Clearville Road. The assessment is outrageous. We already paid, according to the town of Algoma, sanitary purchases and water, and both were state-approved. If we hook up to your water, our bill's gonna be triple, same with sanitary, it's gonna triple. We don't need it, no one needs it, you may need it for your industrial park down at the 91 in Clearville, but not a single landowner along there needs it, and you're destroying our lives. You think it's nothing because you deal with big numbers all the time, but for a homeowner to get a $50,000 bill and say they gotta pay it for nothing difference, no change in our lifestyle, no change whatsoever, it's ridiculous. And I think you guys should not be proud of it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. We have, yep, Steve Klinger would be up next, followed by Jeff Faust, and then Carol Faust.
Again, I echo exactly what he's saying. We bought the house, you know, almost 20 years ago, we understood that we were gonna be annexed in the city of Oshkosh, and we understood that there could be some assessments that came with that. However, we did not know that that assessment would be nearly, oh, exactly half of what we paid for the house and the property at the time. So we're getting charged, you know, a very small household. We moved to the lot because we had, it's a big lot, unfortunately, it was long and covers a lot of the road, so we're getting, you know, basically assessed twice as much as, you know, say, a typical house in the city of Oshkosh, you know, where they have 40 feet of frontage or something like that. It's great that they have the informational meeting beforehand, but it's terrible to watch my wife break down, understanding that I got kids that are going to college, that hey, I'm not gonna be able to pay for their college now. You know, I got vacations, can't have vacations, I need a new vehicle, can't get a new vehicle. The numbers are outrageous, and we understand what people have paid, you know, within the last, you know, five years, it was not this much, and we know, we've seen it. It just needs to be rethought of, and again, we're not getting anything that we don't already have. In fact, it's getting worse, you know, a lot of the dirt that they're doing for this retention pond is getting piled back behind my house. If anything, it's gonna make the water retention in my yard worse with the hydraulic pressure and all that stuff, so it just doesn't seem fair or just or right or anything. That's really all I got.
Okay, thank you. Jeff Faust, followed by Carol.
Is it okay?
Sure can, of course, yeah.
Good evening.
Aye. I'm gonna repeat pretty much what everybody else has said, but I'm gonna throw a little more personal view to this. Our property is gonna be weak, $107,000. How are we gonna pay that? And that doesn't include the water. Now, we found out tonight that there's gonna be water, too, that we have to pay. How are we gonna pay this? What are we gonna do? I'm gonna have to pay $500 a month to pay this. I want each one of you to think about that. Take $500 of your money every month, 15 years, and just throw it in the garbage, because that's what we have to do. I'd like you to re-review this assessment charge that's listed on here. It's gotta be reduced. Something's gotta be done. We just can't afford this. It's just too much.
Mr. Jeff Faust.
Well, everybody else has already said, but I'm gonna take my minute and repeat it because I think it warrants, and you guys should take your time to hear it again. None of us asked to be annexed into the city, none of us wanted to be annexed into the city, none of us asked for sanitary sewer, main, lateral services, none of us asked for a water main, we all have private sanitary systems and wells, working just fine, and my bill, my share and my wife, is about $170,000. You guys think about how you'd like to get a bill for something you didn't want, didn't ask for, don't need, for $170,000. Now, if you've all got suggestions on how I'm gonna come up with the money to pay for that, I'd like to hear it. Because essentially, the city, without my say-so, having anything to do with it, is dictating that I must sell my property, I must chop it up and get every nickel I can to pay for this. I have worked more hours in my life than any of you guys could probably conceive. I worked over 3,000 hours a year, most of my life. I've worked over 105 hours in a single week, and I don't get to retire. Ever. Think about that. Think about the bills you're sending out.
It looks like that is the last person registered to speak on this one. If there's anybody else here registered to speak, or that would like to speak, now is your time. Second reading, Resolution 23-583, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 23-16, that's concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, and storm sewer main and laterals, new and relay, for Clearville Road, State Road 91 to West 20th Avenue. Third and final reading for Resolution 23-583, this is approving final resolution for special assessments for contract 23-16, this is work on Clearville Road. With that, we'll consider the public hearing closed, and I'll take a motion for approval in a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
James could explain exactly, or someone could explain exactly what's going on here.
This is the calculation for installation of new sewer and water mains to parcels that have not had public sewer and water installed in front of them before. It's following what is in our policy, that's what was prepared and sent out.
And this is not covered by other, this, can you explain the difference between these special assessments and other special assessments that discussions about?
Yeah, it's, you know, a lot of the discussions we've been having in the past have focused on street reconstruction projects where the big cost is usually the concrete paving, and then, you know, the utility costs are for service laterals. In the instance of installing new mains through an area that does not have public mains before, you know, that is different from what we see on our usual street reconstruction projects.
Thank you. I'm gonna go right after that, piggyback on that. If you could just elaborate on that part, because as we're looking at the supporting material, the, what the property owners are gonna have for special assessments per parcel, the largest chunk is for the sanitary area assessments. It's not for the laterals themselves, it's really for the area assessment, as you just mentioned, installing the main down Clearville Road that hasn't previously been there. Can, would you refresh council's memory on that assessment, that charge, and how that, why is that charge what it is? Like, because what we're looking at is some parcels, you know, there's actually one parcel that's $100,000, right, assessment for an area charge, others are, you know, 20, 30, 40,000.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask City Engineer Justin Garrick to come up and help me with that description, but it is, it's calculated on a front-footage basis up to a maximum depth of 120 feet, I believe?
Correct, 120 feet. So basically, the way the policy is written out is the area charges for sewer, and then could be water, are calculated on the previous year's construction costs. So at the end of the year, we take all of, so the 2020, what year is it, 2023 rates are calculated from the 2022 construction projects. We take all of our bid prices from all our projects from 2022, look at, for sanitary sewer specifically, a normal block face being like 800 feet, so we get 800 feet of main, a couple manholes, eight-inch sewer nominally 10 feet deep. Use that to calculate the cost of what it would take to actually install that main. It then gets back calculated into the area charge, because that's what the policy states on basically a general 120-foot develop a lot area, so your front foot times 120 feet to get your area charge.
On any construction project currently, like in 2023, if we were putting a new main, you know, we're doing a full reconstruction, we're putting a new main down the middle of the road, does the cost to install that down that road is not shared in a similar fashion? Is that correct?
Correct. So if we're doing a reconstruct, say, Algoma from last year, or Lincoln Rosalia for a couple years ago, or this year, Lincoln and McKinley, all those are reconstructs. So the utility, the sewer and the water have already been installed, and have been paid for by the owners when they were installed based on those costs back then. So those reconstruct, maintenance of the utilities are borne by the utility.
And that's the nuance, I think, I think of a previous conversation, it may have been brief, maybe with the city manager, it may have been with Public Works too, but the Public Service Commission dictates a little bit of that, right, that that's fully borne by those property owners, not the utility itself, is that accurate?
The way the Public Service Commission would look at it is it's not borne by the utility for that first installation of new main.
Okay.
So, you know, that's where the policy came up with a way of splitting the costs across adjacent properties, because the Public Service Commission, which regulates water, and then we mirrored our sanitary sewer to what the water policy was, would state that, you know, those costs for new construction are not borne by the utility, the costs for maintenance and replacing long-term would be borne by the utility.
Okay. Councilmember Stevenson was up next.
Yeah, so the work's already been done, I take it, the mains in the ground and everything, or is this the step before that?
It's not in the ground yet.
So Clearville Road construction, the project has been let, and the contractor's been working on the pond portion of the Rural Two project, this is all part of that same project. We anticipate the sewer, the storm sewer and water laterals in Clearville Road to start, depending on weather, at some point in February of next year.
Okay, and then, so I take it when somebody comes into the city, we require that they get onto our services, right? Is that typically policy, is that why we're putting this in right now?
The sewer, yes, the water, we have to get that to the property, but there is provisions, if people are on wells, that they could stay on wells and not be utilizing the public water, but they do have to get the sewer connected, and that is something that Winnebago County has been pushing as well. Anytime there's public sewer, as opposed to onsite private systems, you know, they want properties connected to the public sewer.
Sure. Yeah, I don't know, I'm usually a big policy guy, but I struggle a little bit with this one, given the hefty costs that people are having to bear on this. I don't know if there's any, anyone up here at council, we have any solutions, are we able to, I don't know, are we able to push this off, are we able to allow them to be on their sanitary, their cells and, or cells, their septic and wells for a time period? I don't know, do you guys have any solutions or ideas, or looking to brainstorm?
Well, the sewer hookup, I think, is separate from the sewer assessment, the sewer hookup is regulated by the county.
Okay.
These folks are in the situation where they're, they have relatively large properties compared to regular single-family homes, and so it's the volume of the size of their lots that's really what's dictating the size of the assessment. You know, the struggles that they're talking about, the size of their assessment, is because they have, you know, they have lots that, if they were a developer, which they are not, if they were a developer, subdividing this would divide that by all the lots they're creating. These folks are not subdividing, so they're in the situation that until such a time, something different happens, it's just one house or one business that's being impacted by this. And that's, that's the dilemma that these folks are facing, but in terms of our policy and our consistency, whenever you're at these outlying areas, this is the type of situation that you might, you might encounter.
Go ahead, and I follow.
Yeah, can you explain the annexation process, how they came to be annexed with the agreement with the town?
It's probably more of a planning issue, but our boundary agreement, our border agreement with the town of Algoma had certain areas that would be annexed into the city, attached to the city at a certain point, and these folks were just attached in 2023.
When were those agreements, where are they from? Maybe Director Lyons will be the one to...
I do not know the year of the Algoma boundary agreement, but it's...
Yeah. 2003, I believe.
2003, it sounds like, but this was the Zone C attachment that that agreement triggered in 2023, was the last of the three initial attachments, and then there'll be one additional attachment that happens at the end of that boundary agreement.
Okay, thank you. Just one more question for myself, unless anybody else has, nobody's button pressed. This is a bit unique, though, for us to install brand-new mains in an area that hasn't previously been serviced. We don't do this very often, is that relatively accurate?
Usually, you see it when you're doing, say, out on 9th, where you have a developer who wants to do a subdivision, so we just did that a couple years ago along 9th.
Right, right.
And so, as you mentioned, that cost was borne by the developer, and subsequently passed on to the homeowners, most likely through their development and acquisition of that new home, you know, process. Probably more of a comment than a question for you guys. So it's, I'm just wanting to make sure that while the impact is absolutely, it is a massive financial impact, but this is not unique to this road, specifically, we do this with other developments, other new spaces that we have.
A prime example, and I'm going back in the memories a little bit here, but I want to step off of Lake Buttermore Drive, Riff Road area, back in 2014-ish, we installed new water main, water main loop, so those properties that were adjacent to it, that at that point in time would have had the area assessments associated with the installation of that. So it does happen, again, I think as City Manager Roloff mentioned, it happens more on the outlying sides of the city, because, again, the parts in the city have been installed previously, and this is a one-time charge for new installation of mains.
Councilmember Hayes.
I just have a quick question, my own clarification. So are there times that a developer, a developer would not bear the cost of this?
No, they would, they would bear the costs, and it's, you know, typically, it doesn't get initiated in circumstances like this. Typically, it's initiated in the, in the way you just described, the developer says, I would like to get city services, I would like to subdivide, can you extend utilities out to me? And the most recent example was probably along 9th.
Yeah, and actually Ripon Lane, another prime example, Ripon Lane from last year, new sewer and water was installed out there, so another example.
But the difference there, and this is out of respect for these folks, that is, even though it was Ripon Lane, it was technically in the town of Algoma, it was kind of surrounded by urban development anyway, so it really was just getting it down the road. The biggest lot there was maybe 80 feet, and these folks, their lots are much larger. And we don't have any provisions for deferral of special assessments, and that would probably be the closest you could get. The concern you have is in the city is then holding those costs until such a time as subdivision occurs, and then what, what triggers reviving the assessments? I've seen that over the years, it comes often, often becomes difficult, but I understand exactly what they're saying, and I know you're listening, because that's why you're asking all the questions you're asking.
I see no other members wishing to speak. Councilmember Stevenson.
I know this is maybe coming up with completely new policy, but, I mean, is there a way that we could assess their property, but it get, it's payable at time that they sell, something like that? I, we probably have to come up with a whole different, I don't...
Can I go first?
Currently...
Sure. Just, you go ahead.
Currently, our policy is that if somebody goes on the payment plan, and they were to sell their property, that there would be, that would have to be paid at that time, or if it's subdivided. And I know the Fausts did inquire about that, you know, if they did sell one of their lots, would they be able to, would we be able to hold off the payment until after the sale went through? And that's certainly something that, that I think we could talk about, but there's always that issue of creating a policy that you can consistently apply. So whatever we would do here, we would have to make sure that we get ourselves covered for, let's say, a developer wants to come in and say, well, I want the same treatment. And I know why you're struggling with this, because, I mean, these are real people with a single lot, it just happens to be a really large lot, as opposed to a developer is like, well, I'd like you to hold the money until I make money. That's a different story, they assume that risk, they have to, they assume that risk by doing it. In this case, they're, you know, these folks are assuming the risk, and they only have one lot to speak for right now, until, until they say, well, I'll sell it to a developer to do this, and that type of thing. So it would be developing a policy that would be, that we'd have to consistently apply to these folks who you're trying to help, versus everybody else who may not warrant the same consideration that I know you're struggling with right now.
So that's my, my concern, is one, trying to create policy on the fly, unintended consequences and the things that are forgotten about, and the equal application of, of the policies that we have, that, you know, we've treated developments the same. I do, I remember some difficult decisions, we put in a, I think it might have been a sewer main out on, I think you mentioned, out in the Lake Buttermore Drive area, you know, there's some farmland that we assessed, a significant one too, it was a tough pill to swallow, it was a very similar assessment, if my memory serves me. But it's, that is the policy we currently have. If that's something that council wants to consider a change to, I would, I would not suggest we try to create it on the fly, and instead, we would delay action on this item potentially, but with no guarantee.
Yeah, and I don't mean, I don't, I don't mean to say that I'm trying to create anything up here right now, I'm asking the questions more for if we wanted to talk about it later. So no, I would never create something on the fly like that right now, but...
Any other discussion? I see none. City clerk, if you please take the roll on 23-583.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Buelow.
Aye.
Hayes.
No.
Erickson?
No.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated four.
Next up, public hearing for Resolution 23-584, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 23-25, that's concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, and storm sewer mains and lateral, new and relay. This is for South Kohler Street, West 20th Avenue to State Highway 44. And I do not believe I had anyone registered to speak to this item. Second reading, Resolution 23-584, this is public hearing to approve final resolution for special assessments for contract 23-25 for South Kohler, this is West 20th Avenue to State Highway 44. If anyone's registered, or if anybody's interested in speaking on this, now is your time to come forward. Third and final time reading, Resolution 23-584, approved final resolution for special assessments for... final resolution for special assessments for Contract two-three dash two-five, this is for project on South Kohler Street, West Twentieth Avenue to State Highway forty-four. Consider the public hearing closed, we'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll on twenty-three five eight four.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate six?
Public hearing related to Resolution twenty-three five eight five, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract twenty-three dash two-six for asphalt overlay. This is Riff Road from eleven hundred feet west of Lake Buttermore Drive to thirty-six hundred feet west of Lake Buttermore Drive. I do not have anyone registered to speak to this item. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to this, now is the time. Second reading, public hearing for Resolution twenty-three five eight five, approved final resolution for special assessments for Contract twenty-three dash two-six for asphalt overlay on Riff Road. Third and final reading, Resolution twenty-three five eight five, this is the public hearing for approving final resolution for special assessments for Contract twenty-three dash two-six asphalt overlay on Riff Road. Consider the public hearing closed, take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Please take the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate six?
Give me just one second, I want to make sure I'm right with who's speaking on what. Perfect. All right, now we're at citizen statements to council. I have no one registered for citizen statements. We'll move on to consent agenda, take a motion in a second for consent.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford?
Yes, can you please pull item number twenty-four?
Yep, Resolution twenty-three six oh two, correct. Any discussion on the other items on consent? Seeing none, if you'll take the role on consent minus twenty-three dash six oh two.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate six?
Twenty-three dash six oh two, approved special event, Solutions Recovery, Inc., to utilize Menominee Park and City Streets for Recovery Fest Event, September seventh, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'll just say it's a great event, you should all attend it, but my wife is on the board of Solutions, so I'm not going to vote on this.
Sounds good. If you'll please take the roll on twenty-three six oh two.
So do I just skip over Mr. Ford, or?
He's got to vote.
You're going to give a present.
Okay. Ford?
Present.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate five, one present.
Next up, we're on to new ordinances. Ordinance twenty-three dash six one one, this is to amend parking restrictions on Short Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Transportation Committee also recommends council waive the rules and adopt on first reading. I have no one registered to speak on this, I'll take a motion in a second to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on waiving the rules? Seeing none, if you'll take the role on waiving the rules?
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate six?
Ordinance twenty-three dash six one one, this is to amend parking restrictions on Short Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval, take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate six?
The following four ordinances, our first readings and no action is anticipated. Ordinance twenty-three dash six one two, approved zone change for suburban mixed-use district to institutional district for the property located at five oh five Northwestfield Street, Plan Commission recommends approval. Next up, ordinance twenty-three dash six one three, approved zone change from urban mixed-use district with a riverfront overlay to urban mixed-use district with a riverfront and planned development overlay for the property located at six two seven Bay Shore Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval of that. Ordinance twenty-three six one four, amend section thirty dash two seven one, sections G five of the City Municipal Code pertaining to commercial message and signage in Chapter Eight, Article Four pertaining to murals, Plan Commission recommends approval. And final new ordinance, twenty-three dash six one five, this is to cancel the December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. We'll take those up for action at the next council meeting. On to new resolutions, Resolution twenty-three dash six one six, this is opposed legislation to subject municipal stormwater utilities to regulation by the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. Take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm happy to go off on this one. Thank you, City Manager Roloff, for bringing this to us. I'm in full agreement with the resolution, as I think its effects would be damaging. First, it further erodes local control by taking a local decision out of our hands and giving it to a state regulatory body. Second, it's redundant, as was pointed out in the board packet, that there's already a process by which people can appeal stormwater utility fees to the USC, or to the PSC, excuse me. Third, and this is, I think, the most important point for anyone who says it's difficult to do development or run a business here in Oshkosh, that, that this action, if, if this state legislation passed, would create a potential new layer of regulatory hoops that would impact timelines, or could impact timelines for projects in Oshkosh. It's definitely the opposite of efficiency, promises to make things harder for everyone, and as was pointed out in the packet, could often lead to situations where we're raising stormwater utility rates, or fees, excuse me. That said, I get where people are coming from, nobody likes to pay the stormwater utility fee. This body has stated together that we don't want to see these continued increases, and I do want to point out that we have taken meaningful action right here at the local level. Last year, we as a body drew attention to these fee increases. I can say I personally spent hours meeting with folks from the chamber and elsewhere, as did others, I'm sure, talking to folks. We documented the increases in the stormwater utility fee from its inception and the fund balance since the utility's inception in response to those concerns, and we did take some meaningful action. First, statified utilized portions of the balance of the stormwater utility fund to pay for projects with cash rather than taking on new debt that would be repaid with further increases to our stormwater fees down the line. We made clear the balance needed to be spent down, that was the direction we gave to staff, and they're doing it. We kept increases to the fees lower than they've been historically this last round, putting us on a trajectory to have it down to two percent by two thousand twenty-five and to actually have a zero percent increase in two thousand twenty-eight. Most important, we stopped the process of authorizing positions funded with stormwater fees prior to setting of the fee, and that decoupling means that council and the public will know exactly what any new position is going to do to the stormwater utility fee. So I get that none of these actions are particularly sexy, nobody scores political points with this stuff, but they are steps that will have a lasting positive impact in our community and on those who pay this fee here in Oshkosh, and they're also steps that would not necessarily be taken and could be undone if this legislation moved forward, so I fully support us opposing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Any other comments? I try not to disagree with Mr. Ford, especially when he's right. But yeah, in a nutshell, make it more difficult and potentially increase fees. It doesn't get any simpler for that, than that for me to be on board with this, so I'll be fully supporting this, if you'll take the roll on twenty-three six one six.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate six?
Resolution twenty-three dash six one seven, approve specific implementation plan amendment for building addition at three seven nine two Jackson Street, Plan Commission recommends approval. I do have Mr. Richard Fisher who'd like to speak to this, if you'd like to come on up. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Rick Fisher with Fisher &amp; Associates Architects, I'm the project architect for the project. The, the plan is to expand the property, it's currently a dog daycare, and they're, what they're doing is they're modernizing a facility they started a few years ago, they have a, a plan in place. They, basically what they're doing, be doing is building about a five thousand square-foot addition, they're going to be adding an indoor play area that they currently don't have, they're going to be modernizing all their indoor kennels, adding some indoor daycare space, modernizing, replacing, expanding all of their, their grooming and other care spaces as well. And then their current outdoor play yard is going to be roughly the same size, but it's going to be subdivided into three separate groups, so they can, instead of one, one large play area, they can, then they can segregate and manage the, the guests as, as needed. They also have some nice added features where they've got easy access in and out of the building, you know, through some, uh, large vestibule-type spaces, so it's really, just a really good way to organize and, and run that business and, and make a much better facility than what they currently have. They had moved into a existing facility and, and, you know, built it out as, as they need, so as part of this project, all of their square footage is being, you know, repurposed and, and rearranged, so it's a really nice, you know, facility with, you know, a good long-term plan. So I don't know if there's any questions for me at all, I just wanted to present the project and the nice improvements they're planning to make for the business.
Appreciate you being here, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll take a motion in a second on twenty-three six one seven.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Or questions for representative?
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
I like it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I thought you were looking at me.
Keep going.
Buellow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate six?
Resolution twenty-three six one eight, approve specific implementation plan for a mixed-use, excuse me, mixed multifamily residential and commercial development at Zero West Twentieth Avenue, Plan Commission recommends approval. Do have two people registered to speak to this. Nancy, who's the first one up, I don't have a last name on that, if you wouldn't mind when you come up, if you could give your last name, too, and then followed by Mr. Ray Carver. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. This is Nancy Bongard, thirty-three seventy-four West Twentieth. We're here as the neighbors to just ask for your support. This project has been quite interesting, and some of us are still trying to catch up with it, quite frankly. You know, originally, we understood from the developer when we went through the preserves way back when they had the open house, he had several comments about that there would be buffers and that, you know, garages would be parallel to our west lot line, so that would create a buffer. There were several other comments made. So you can only imagine our surprise when the whole thing started to unfold, even going back to spring, when we had some of the original Plan Commission meetings, et cetera. You know, it was suggested that we have a neighborhood meeting with the developer, have these things really, you know, unfold in the right way so that you can get buy-in and have the neighbors kind of come along with the process, just like we all like to do. So the neighbors requested a meeting with the developer, and the developer said, "Oh, you know, I'll, I'm working on the plans, I'll send you the new plans." We didn't receive those. So that brought us very quickly to last week's meeting for Plan Commission. When we saw the plan, there were obviously a few concerns, and it comes back to the same things as far as, you know, possible landscaping upgrades, always concerned about drainage, you know, the mitigating, the noise, or the lighting issues, the traffic issue, the movement of a playground, and then any possible additional buffers such as fencing. Out of those requests, we ended up with the conditions, and, you know, a special thank you to Plan Commission, because really the help walking through that whole process assisted us, but we ended up with the, moving the recreational area, there was two of them along the west lot line, one will be moved to another area on the development, and then to add some additional points of landscaping. That came up specifically for us that are on the west lot line, the garages in the apartment buildings are now perpendicular to the lot line, and the placement of the garages and the parking stalls allows our new neighbors that are coming into this new development to turn down to go to their prospective, you know, garage or parking stall, their lights will shine in the back third of my lot, and then for our neighbors at the preserves will definitely be shining in some of their backyards. So that's where the additional landscaping points came from. So we did get a couple of those things, just want to, again, ask for your support to make sure that those conditions stay in, in place. We were a little bit surprised, and I, I think others could speak to this as well, that the traffic study that was originally requested last spring was put aside, you know, decided not to do. You know, we still have some concerns, we think at this point we're just being good neighbors, and we're still hoping for those neighborhood meetings to kind of bring us into the process a little bit. You know, we understand the development, we, let's just try to get to a better place together. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Carver?
Thank you, Raymond Carver, nineteen fourteen Preserve, basically everything Nancy just went through, we haven't heard from the developer since the meeting to discuss these items, so he has not reached out again to talk about them and what he's going to do, so we have a large concern that, that, are they going to happen? Is he going to reach out, or is this project going to move on, similar to what we experienced at the Preserve? So twenty-three homes, people there know what they experienced through the building process, we have substantial water drainage issues that are not rectified, that we're still dealing with at this point, that the builder has not done, completed with grading, and there's basements with water issues. So we have concerns, and somebody has to be able to hold them accountable for these items. The traffic is a large concern, you have the school that backs up a traffic daily, you have the Y that backs up a traffic daily, this is directly across from the Y, you're going to have three hundred additional vehicles with a coffee shop on a street that the city has already put speed limit monitoring devices there with the signs and telling people how fast they're going, because they drive way past the speed limit already, and we're going to add three hundred cars, so that, plus that coffee shop's going to draw, and there wasn't a traffic study done. I don't feel this project should move ahead, just brush it off, because this is an issue that's going to happen on this street, and you have a school next to it and a church with little or no sidewalk protection there for people, and that's a fast area, speed limit's thirty-five, you can count on forty-five or better than people that are driving. I don't know what can be done, I don't know what a traffic study will resolve, but this is an issue, adding this many automobiles to this, to this section of, of Twentieth Avenue. And then you have all these things go on at the Y with young children and people, people are going to be trying to cross the street with that sub, or that apartment complex there, and all these people driving thirty-five, forty-five miles an hour easy. It, it's, it's a large concern, and I don't think it should be brushed off, I don't know why it wasn't done, and we're concerned it wasn't done, so I'm hoping there's something that can be done to at least mitigate some of that, and I don't know if it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit that would be done, I don't know what would be done, but we're hoping for something. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak to this, so I'll take a motion in a second for Resolution twenty-three six one eight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, Mr. Lyons is ahead of us, can you just confirm that the, you know, I know there was an amendment at Plan Commission, and the conditions, that's what we're voting on here, so those conditions that Nancy, and I apologize, I don't, I don't know your last name, you told us, though, those will be, are included in what we're voting on.
Yep, so in your packet, Conditions seven and eight were added as a result of the Plan Commission hearing. Plan Commission sought to have relocation of one of the recreational areas that they mentioned along the west property line to the eastern half of the site, so we will work with the developer, and we've had some conversations with him about potential options of where that can move to. And then item eight, as they mentioned, you know, there are a couple of drive aisles that are east-west oriented that would potentially generate vehicle lights to those western property owners. Uh, so between relocation of some of the existing landscaping points as well as Plan Commission adding an additional 200 landscaping points, there's really three areas that need a little bit of landscaping addressed to help with that. So item eight should help address that concern.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Maybe off topic, maybe on topic. Uh, the subdivision next door is zoned multifamily, right?
The Preserve, correct, is zoned multifamily.
And there, I assume there's single family homes that are built there?
There, there's single family homes done as part of a condo association.
Okay.
Or a homeowners zone association.
Okay, sure. No, I, I just, I guess I wanted to know why that was, so, yeah.
There was multifamily proposed there at one point in time.
Okay.
But ultimately that was unsuccessful moving forward and the developer came in and chose to do the, the individual, um, condo units or, um, homeowners association units.
Okay.
I have no other individuals looking to speak up here. If you'll take the roll on 23, 618.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Buellow.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curate six.
Resolution 23, 619, approve resolution for the city of Oshkosh to officially join the Wisconsin Local Government Climate Coalition. Sustainability Advisory Board recommends approval.
Take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, sorry, I'm talking too much. I just want to point out that, um, you know, thank you to the Sustainability Board. I mean, I think it's a good example of showing how boards and commissions can, um, follow our, our flow chart and our process for getting things in front of us. So I, I'm glad that you, you were proactive in doing that. And as was pointed out at the, uh, in the minutes of the meeting, um, this action is consistent with the goals of the 2019 Sustainability Plan. I'm reading it right now. Improve the quality of life in Oshkosh by incorporating sustainability practices to meet the environmental, economic and social needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. And joining this organization seems perfectly consistent with that goal we all approved in 2019, so happy to support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Seeing no other buttons pressed, City Clerk, please take the roll.
Ford.